Good evening, the regular meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors, February 27th, 2019, meeting will now be called to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Manser?
Here.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Oates?
Here.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Dr. Hartsfield?
Here.
Mr. Fiero? Ms. Morris? Ms. Robinson?
Here. Is there any objection to approve tonight's agenda? Seeing no objection, the agenda is approved. We do want to apologize for being late in our meeting today. We appreciate your patience. We have ten individuals who have indicated they wish to address the board this evening. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. The Chair recognizes Susan Stocking to talk about the DAC. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Bedell, Chairwoman Robinson, member of the boards. I'm just gonna give you an update on some of the activities going on with the District Advisory Committee. In our January 30th meeting, we looked at various ways that people were giving back to the district. We heard from our northeast Viking Village that was started...
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah. Northeast Viking Village, which is a food and clothes bank, started by alums. Dr. Davis spoke about the mentoring programs, and then we had a pastor from Restore Community Church talking about organizations outside that can come in and do service with the district. At the last DAC Executive Board meeting, we voted to oppose the sales tax question one on the April ballot. I'd like to provide a copy of our statement. March 12th, the District Advisory Committee, along with more squared League of Women Voters and Visitation CCO, will be presenting a school board candidate form at the Lenwood United Church, 3151 Olive. That's Tuesday, March 12th, at 6:30 PM. There are flyers outside of the board meeting. And then, we're very excited that next week we are going to be heading to Jefferson City with a delegation of parents. The purpose of the trip is to experience the legislative process, increase comfort, our comfort level with interacting with legislators, and to build relationships with our representatives. We've had a couple of training sessions to learn more about the educational landscapes in the city and overall in the 2019 KCPS legislative agenda, and we've talked about our messaging as parents to our legislator. So, I will also provide a copy of our legislative leave behind letter that we will be leaving with our representatives next week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Ms. Roberts to talk about Central Academy of Excellence. The Chair recognizes Nicole Crawford to discuss transportation contract.
Hello.
Welcome, Ms. Crawford, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I came to speak to you all today because I work for KCPS and specifically in exceptional education for our early childhood students. And I personally work directly with routing...
Please speak into the mic and come a little... Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. So, I personally work directly with our routers who go above and beyond every single day to make sure that they are getting our kiddos taken care of. Unfortunately, we have experienced a lot of issues with our current transportation as we are seeing not enough buses being routed. We're having to route children via cab instead of being able to get them on a bus because they're not able to fit them on the bus. There's not enough buses, not enough drivers, that kind of thing. And it's created a lot of issues. It's created delays in service for some of our very young kiddos that are having special needs that need to be able to get to school, and they can't get to school if they don't have a bus. And unfortunately, it's really created a lot of hardship for a lot of the families in the district that I get to work with. And so, I just wanted to speak to the district, and you know, we have such dedicated drivers, and we appreciate them so much. Unfortunately, operationally, we have a lot of concerns that are negatively impacting a lot of our families. So, I just wanted to speak to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Crawford. The Chair recognizes Tom Love to discuss Senate Bill 319. Welcome, Mr. Love.
Thank you, it's good to be here tonight, even though it's so cold. I'd like to go over some of the questions that the board members asked two weeks ago about Senate Bill 319. One of the questions is, when did it start? What year? At the top of the page, it's only, the law's only three pages long here. The top of the page, it says it started, it became effective July the 1st, 2001. So, this is 2019, so it's been a long time coming. The district announced that we're going to begin requesting the funds that's available, which is wonderful. Everybody likes to get some money to fix the reading problem, right, with the kids? There were 333 students identified in 4th grade that were at 1st grade reading level or below. 333. I don't know how many people are in this room. I should, I was gonna count how many seats there are, but just imagine if all those children were here tonight, and their parents, maybe their grandparents, they would be advocating for help. This law requires help to continue in 5th and 6th grade, and it requires 70 hours of tutoring. The district person who I guess just got assigned to this only identified 40 hours. But it's 40 hours during the summer and 30 hours during the school year. Why is 70 hours significant? Because it normally takes about 70 hours of tutoring to raise a student one grade level. And that law wants us to make sure that children get to at least complete 4th grade reading level, which is considered functionally literate. So, now, in the 2016-17 school year, I have a sunshine request from the district dated February 26th, 2018. There was only one 6th grader in Senate Bill 319 that was helped. Can you believe that? Does anyone believe that there was only one 6th grader that was two years more behind in reading? I don't see any hands. I don't either. They just weren't identified. Now, how do we get there? We ignored the law in Senate Bill 319 that also requires the parents to be informed what's going on. Does anyone here want to blame the parents for this? I'm not. The law requires us to provide Title I reading funds that provide reading teachers to these children who are failing in kindergarten through 2nd. This Senate Bill 319 identifies that you're supposed to inform the parents of this in kindergarten through 4th grade, the last paragraph in this law. They're not being told. I know because I've been to Title I meetings. They are not being informed. All it takes is $100,000 per school to provide a literacy lab. There's 22 Title I schools, that's 2.2 million. We get not, we get twice that much money for these children, and yet, in this incredible literacy problem, which leads to crime, leads to all kinds of problems for these children for the rest of their life.
Thank you, Mr. Love.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes...
I would like to say this.
Thank you, your three months, your three minutes went over.
I would like for you guys to be able to allow yourself to ask questions to the people who present.
The Chair recognizes Michael Narcis, Narcis with Student Transportation. I apologize if I butchered your name. Welcome, you have three minutes.
To Superintendent Bedell, board members, good evening. My name is Michael Narcis. I'm the Location Manager at First Student, Kansas City. I went to Longfellow back in the 90s, and I'm a proud product of the KCPS school educational system. I began my journey with First Student five years ago. I needed a way to pay for college, and what I thought was just going to be a job became my passion. I truly enjoy supporting the district that supported me and provide transportation safe and reliable each day to our community. We've maintained a 97% on-time performance this school year. Our attendance rate is 95% because we have built an engaged and supportive culture. The Missouri State Highway Patrol recognized us for 10 years of outstanding inspection results for KCPS. My team is excited about what we've been doing, where we've learned from our struggles, celebrated our successes, and pushed for excellence. As we're making a difference day in day, we go outside of just transportation. We've donated more than 200 backpacks and winter coats to give to students in need. Safety Dog, our mascot, has visited Faxton and Longfellow as part of our National Safety Dog School Bus Event. Our drivers have also been recognized for the terrific teammate award, providing excellent customer service. I've had a chance to proactively work with each of the principals in this district. I make sure that they understand that we see ourselves as part of KCPS, as part of the family. Your students are our students. We've also been affected by the gun violence that has plagued our community. Our buses have been shot multiple times. Thankfully, no one has been injured, and our drivers have shown good judgment and done exactly what their training is. My location has had zero sleeping students on their buses because we've trained our drivers to make sure that they check the bus for sleeping students after every trip. So far, 30 drivers have found students. There's a reason why First Student is first in safety. It takes a consecr, a concentrated effort, training, and dedication. And honestly, safety is at the heart of everything we do. Our commitment to KCPS is evident in our management team. You'll be hard pressed to find someone that can replace it. Our competitors know this, that's why they actively seek us, even myself.
Thank you, Mr. Narcis. The Chair recognizes Kelly Hamilton with, to discuss student transportation. Welcome, Mr. Hamilton, you have three minutes.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, Board, and all the members and coworkers in this room. I want to adjust, address commitment. Our company is very committed to serving our children and making sure that they're safe. We do everything in our power to make sure that every student, even if the bus is late, we send buses back. Our dispatch office sends buses back to pick up students, and that's on our dime. We don't charge the school board any extra money. That's on us. We are committed to this, to this community, we are committed to our students, and we are committed to you. And we do everything, and we go above and beyond, that, to make sure that your needs are met. And we do everything in our power to make sure, if you call us and say, "Look, we need a bus to go back," we do that. If you say, "Hey, look, I need a bus to go over here at the last minute," we do that. We do everything in our power to make you happy, and we, to make our students happy. And the students are first. If a student gets on my bus, I remember. A student got on my bus, and they didn't have, my wife also, she works for a student. A student got on her bus as well, didn't have a coat. She gave the student a coat. She is committed. I am committed. I had a girl to get on my bus and say, "Look, Mr. Bus Driver, I'm pregnant. What should I do?" I said, "Go and tell your parents. Tell them what you're going through and the mistake you made." We are committed, and we don't want to do anything else. We don't want to go anywhere else, but we want to serve you. Because we know we can do the job, we know we can be effective. This year, maybe, yes, with the snow and all these things, it has been a problem. But still, we are committed, and we will go, do everything we can to make sure that you are a satisfied customer. We don't, we know our competition says they're what they're gonna say, but hey, look, some of that is a little fluff because we've been here. We've been here for 10 years. 10 years we have been it on this thing. And we're committed to the community, and we give back to the community. So, when you make your vote, I'm asking, we have been committed to you, be committed to us.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. The Chair recognizes Jackie Pearson to discuss student transportation. Welcome, Ms. Pearson, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Actually, my name is Brooke Winfield, and I just want to reflect on...
Ms. Winfield, is Jackie Pearson here?
No, she is not.
We do not accept replacement speakers. Thank you for your time. We're gonna move to John Billigmeyer to discuss student transportation. Welcome, Mr. Billigmeyer, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Superintendent Bedell, board members. I'm John Billigmeyer, Region Vice President for First Student. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. How students get to and from school matters, and for more than 10 years, you've trusted First Student to provide your families with safe and reliable transportation, and we've delivered. There's nothing more important to us than ensuring our students get to school safely and on time. This school year, not only have we achieved, but also maintained our highest on-time performance rate to date. KCPS students are picked up and dropped off on schedule 97% of the time, which is truly impressive considering all the challenges we face on any given day. Providing reliable service means having enough drivers to cover routes. It's a priority for us. At a time when 90% of all school districts nationally are experiencing a driver shortage, we had a full complement of 239 drivers on the first day of school. We appreciate Dr. Bedell and the Board recognizing our great startups at the board meeting on January 23rd. We have been able to consistently cover routes while other providers in this area have struggled. At First Student, we believe drivers are our best safety feature, which is why we invest more into them than any other student transportation company. Our drivers receive more than 50 hours of training. Because we invest heavily in their hiring, training, and development, First Student drivers deliver a ride to your students that are twice as safe as the industry average. Our drivers are passionate about what they do. You've heard it. 260 of our KCPS employees signed this petition expressing their commitment to our company and to Kansas City Public Schools. We'll do whatever we can to keep them, and we are proud to have them here representing tonight. We want to continue our partnership with KCPS. We've worked hard to ensure we not only meet your expectations, but also build on our success. We developed, delivered a high level of service under a very challenging operating system. You may not be aware that Transpar, an affiliate of STA, is responsible for routing, and we have to follow it. Last year, our team of routing experts proved Transpar's routing is inefficient, causes service issues, and is costing you millions of dollars. We provided the district with studies that show KCPS can eliminate 18 buses, 365 stops, 10% of current miles, and 35 PM runs servicing 23 different schools. Our route optimization process found First Student could save the district close to $1 million a year with no change in bell times. KCPS is the only district of the 1,100 First Student serves that use Transpar for transportation management. It's the only district where we do not work directly with our customer. We want to continue to invest in this relationship and improve service with new buses and technology. Our First View application lets parents track their child bus and be alert to any delays. Our district dashboard allows school administrators to see all buses that service their school and their status. No one else in the industry has this cutting-edge technology.
Thank you, Mr. Billigmeyer. The Chair recognizes Nakin McCurdy to discuss student transportation. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Bedell, Chairwoman Robinson, board members, and administrators. My name is Megan McCurdy, and I represent First Student. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I would like to spend my time this evening discussing in general the school district's policies and the laws governing this board and district. It is clear that Missouri law requires a school district to follow its own rules, and this board's policy follows suit. The superintendent cannot cause or allow conduct that violates a school district policy. So, what are some important school district policies? This board must be informed. It must be supported in its work. Information that is presented to this board must be fully complete. The superintendent cannot allow this board to be unaware of any incidental or other information that this board requires. And the superintendent cannot avoid informing the board that it might not be in compliance with Missouri law and/or its own policies. Now, the district maintains various communication policies. Board members can seek additional information regarding the recommendations before it. If one board member requests information regarding a recommendation, that same information should be provided to each board member. Nothing should hold a board member back from asking questions. In sum, this board should have all access to information necessary to make lawful decisions. Thank you. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. McCurdy. The Chair recognizes our final speaker for the evening, Kirk Wilkie, to discuss student transportation. Welcome, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Bedell. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Kirk Wilkie. I'm Senior Vice President of Operations for STA's Central Region. With me tonight is David Prince, Vice President of our Midwest States Operations. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. You have a big decision to make, and certainly will respect the decision that you make. I did want to comment that just a little over a year ago, I had an opportunity to speak at a luncheon for the Greater Kansas City Superintendents Association. And after talking just briefly about STA and following the luncheon, I had an opportunity to meet Dr. Bedell. He just informed me that Kansas City Public Schools was in the process of working on acquiring facilities in the hopes of encouraging increased competition for student transportation bids. Lo and behold, that came to pass, obviously, and when the district put out an RFP this fall, STA responded. I've been encouraged by everything in that process, by the openness of the process and the information that we were provided. And I think, although, you know, maybe in past years, there would have been a hesitation, as many companies, I think, hesitated to get involved with Kansas City Public Schools, we were very encouraged by the process and how it worked. So, we're happy to be here. We obviously hope for the recommendation to go our way tonight, and we're committed to serve the district. Obviously, you have a lot of very committed school transportation employees here, and certainly want to be clear with the board that they will have every opportunity and first priority to retain those positions with STA. We are a company built on culture and, family culture, and a caring and compassionate approach to our work and everything that we do. We also understand the critical importance of transportation in a child's education. We were here a couple of weeks ago when we were listening to attendance issues for the district, and certainly, we think transportation plays a critical role in that. And we look forward to any opportunity we're provided to serve the district, and importantly, to make a difference in the lives of the students here at Kansas City Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. For the presentation of this evening's revenue and expenditure report, the Chair recognizes our Board Treasurer, Matthew Oates.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is our revenue expenditure report ending as of January 31st. Let's go ahead and hop right on in. First page is our revenue is normal. As we start out with our local revenue source, you'll see that we're about $3 million ahead of last year. And then, that's just due to some investment earnings and also the timing of the receiving of our Proposition C sales tax. So, next, looking at our state line. We're down $1.2 million compared to last year, and that's due to decreasing our weighted average daily attendance, but we are still on budget for what we're expecting for this year. On our federal, federal revenue, this year, we are up about $5 million this year, and that's just mainly due to the timing of reimbursements. Overall, we are up $6 million this year, but that is on budget again, once again, what we're expecting. Next slide is looking at our expenditures. So, under instruction, we are, we are down $2 million compared to last year. And a lot of that's just due to lower summer school costs and also the Missouri preschool project funding. On our support services, we are up $1.5 million this year compared to last, and that's just due to our salary, excuse me, our student support salary increases. On our pupil transportation, this year, we were spending about $2 million more this year, and that's just due to contract cost increase, increased cab use, and then, the timing of payments to our providers. Total expenditure this year is up $1 million over last year, but again, we're still on budget for what we were anticipating. So, the familiar pie chart, we have our, where our money comes from. Again, about 80% of our funding comes from local revenue sources. Looking at the where the money goes, next slide. Yeah, so, again, we have our direct classroom and other instruction accounting for more than half, and then, there's a definition that, about what falls under each one of those. And then, finally, our revenues and expenditures. So, again, as we've talked about throughout this budget year, we anticipated come January presentation, especially for this February one, that you would see our blue line, which is our revenue crossover for our, excuse me, crossover the red line, which is our expenditures. And we anticipate staying above for the rest of the school year, and you'll watch those, those two lines get closer together as we close out this school year. So, again, as we've done last month, and what we'll do, continue to do through budget approval season, is kind of give, bring the board along and also the public along on how budgets are developed and some of the processes that go through it. So, this, this month, the questions that I had for Ms. Quinley, and that she's gonna walk over are, if we've been around here, you know that I've said that I think budgets are your first policy document of the next school year. And so, I want to, we're gonna go over what are those preliminary 2020 goals that this district is looking for? What are some, what are the causes of some of the differences between our current status and what our goals are? How this district goes about researching and vetting solutions to those goals? And then, finally, how do you evaluate priorities on which ones you'll ultimately decide to fund? So, she'll take it away from here.
All right. And I won't read every line for you because I know we have a full night. But Mr. Oates' first question is, you know, what's driving this year's budget? And so, you see listed here some of the priorities that we've begun to assimilate as an administration team, working with a variety of administrators. Continued low attendance continues to be a concern, and so, we want to focus on that in our budget along with student enrollment and retention. We've talked significantly about our outdated technology and putting in, in place a plan that is long-term and is specific and becomes an annual part of our budget so that we keep our students current with the times. We want to focus on our staff and how they are compensated to assure that we're attracting, retaining the best possible staff for our kids. And then, as you go down through there, you see the other areas of focus that will continue. We know that you have committed to the reopening of Lincoln Middle School, so that, of course, is something that we are automatically planning for in next year's operating budget. The goals for this year's budget. We're starting with an evaluation of the fairly significant investment that you made in new things in this year's budget. You remember what they were. They were eye-ready, they were the Pearson mathematics, reading and math interventionist, those kinds of things. So, we want to, every year, check ourselves and evaluate, and make sure we're bringing them back to you because we believe they're beginning or continuing to be effective and should be continued. So, that's our first step and our...
So that's our first step and our, our, our teams are working on that right now. We want to refine our tiered staffing system. Last year was the first year, so we're refining that, making some slight adjustments to target numbers and some things like that. The items in blue here really are obligations that are already made and so they're noted for you. We do have collective bargaining agreements in place with several of our employee groups that have prescribed annual increases this year. We know that by Missouri statute, we are experiencing an increase in the retirement rates, so that's an obligation we're going to consider first. We're going to also be working on permanent lines for that one-to-one device in classrooms. Some additional goals. Allow for adequate staffing and operating for the reopening of Lincoln, as we mentioned on an earlier side. Expansion of career and technical, technical education offerings. We want to make sure that all of our kids are college and career ready and that is a, going to be a focus you'll see in this year's budget. We want to consider special education and English language learner programs and how they can be, better meet the needs of our kids. And then we're going to focus on several other items as well, just to continue to assure that the focus is on students. The bottom bullet is important because all of these things come with significant costs. And as we did last year, we will continue to look for ways to reduce what we're spending on the operational administrat- and administrative sides of the house in order to make sure we're putting supports in for kids where they need to be. This is just a sample of that first line item of how are we beginning? Measuring the implementation and effectiveness of the current year additions. So just as a couple of examples, a reminder, I-ready and vice principals. And so what did we invest in those? We ask each of the leaders who are responsible. This is an example of Pearson math and Dr. Davis has already returned that. And so she is, she gets a star for the week. And, but the, the request was for them to go through and tell us, what were your original goals? What have you done thus far? How is the implementation working? What's left to do? And what, what results, if any, have yet been gained? And then their recommendation for the continuance or expansion of that investment before we begin to ask you for anything more. So that's a picture of the process just a little bit. We have met as a leadership team, had a large group that came together and worked through a process to start identifying some probable priorities. The departments are creating their zero-based budgets right now. It seems to be a lot easier this year than it was last year. I'm really proud of everyone. The cabinet's going to retreat. We're going to spend a morning looking through all of those requests, prioritizing those. We'll all be prepared to provide the appropriate argument and reasoning behind the requests. And then one of Mr. Oats' questions is, how is it that we're going to fund? How do we prioritize and determine which makes it to the end of the, the day? Our first commitments, our first will be to those commitments in place. So those collective bargaining agreements, those state statutes, the reopening of Lincoln. We know those are non-negotiable, right? Then we're going to focus on those priorities that meet the ends as are stated in your board policy. So that's why Dr. Shepherd, you know, will listen to her a lot in this conversation because she's bringing us those things that impact schools. And then what are the other things from our other areas that support the schools and help them? So that'll be the order we consider those in. And if projected resources don't cover all of that, what do we do? So again, we'll continue to, to look for ways that we can become efficient on the other, in the other areas. And we'll make sure that the items we're bringing to you are long-term sustainable in that five-year model that we're working on together so that we know that the commitments you make in this year's budget, we won't be turning around in year two or three or four and saying we can no longer afford those. So that will be how we prioritize and bring to you the financial recommendations. Questions?
Any questions for Matt, Matthew Oats?
So I was just going to say, so our next addition, next time, we hope to go over that five-year outlook and show the public what's, what we've been kind of generating along that to take everybody along, so.
Well, thank you for the presentation and thank you for your leadership on that, Board Member Oats. For our next item, I do want to recognize one of our board members, Dr. Hartsfield, for her leadership in ensuring that our public has every opportunity to be involved and to weigh in on the decisions that are being made by our board. I believe that our collectively, we all want that to happen, but she's taking on specific leadership around that and we appreciate her for that. In that light, the board has completed a, a one-year evaluation of Dr. Bedell, our superintendent. That evaluation was done on Saturday, February 9th of 2019. We utilized the DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Superintendent Evaluation Model, which you can find a blank model on Symbly, which is online and it's our, our online record-keeping system for the district. So you can find that under today's agenda. Prior to April 10th of this year, the board will consider a new three-year con- contract with Dr. Bedell. Are there any questions from my colleagues about this report or the process? Thank you. That concludes my report. Now for the Communications and Community Engagement Committee update. We recognize Ms. Wolfsey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just would like to remind everybody that we go on the road quarterly as a board and our next location, our, our next date is the March 13th meeting and we will be at AC Prep. There were some flyers out front if you want to grab one. Executive session, when the board meets is at 4:30. We usually have a little open house that'll begin at 5:30. There's refreshments. And the workshop begins at 6:30. And this is also the time where we recognize terrific teammates, our student scholars and our community partners. So we hope to see everybody out. Thanks.
Thank you. The next item of business is the report of the superintendent. The chair recognizes Dr. Mark Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is our business meeting and we generally do a video highlight. Our video highlight will be centered on our APR press conference and some additional activities that took place after that press conference. But it will also serve as a bookend to the presentation you will hear with our strategic plan update, which now will include data from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Department of Ed here in the state of Missouri. So we want to go ahead and do the video and then there's, have another announcement and then we will close it out with the strategic plan update.
We are KCPS. Ladies and gentlemen, the 2018 Annual Progress Report Score for Kansas City Public Schools is...
Progress as promised. On February 1st, KCPS announced that students earned 82.9% of the points possible on our 2018 Annual Progress Report.
It seems cliche, yet there's a foundational truth in looking into the eyes of a child, looking into the eyes of the children in our entire KCPS student body and saying to them that I believe, I know that you can. I know that you will succeed. Let me show you how.
The goal of this packed event at Woodland Early Learning Community School was to say, "Thank you, Kansas City," to all in Kansas City who have helped us achieve these unprecedented results.
And I would tell you, as a superintendent, I can't take credit solely for where we are. This, this, there, there were past superintendents that had to do some things. Whether you liked them or not, they had to make decisions that paved the way so that we could come in and focus on instruction.
The Thank You Kansas City Tour continued with one-on-one interviews with several Kansas City news media outlets, including NPR affiliate KCUR, Flatland KCPT.
We want to be a model district that, you know what? Urban education systems can work for all kids and poverty shouldn't be the barrier.
41 Action News.
We focused on instruction, 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 teaching and learning. And we felt that if we could move the needle there, give our kids a stronger foundation to close the gaps against the state, that we, that this was very possible that we could get these kind of results.
The Kansas City Star, KPRT, and Up to Date with Steve Kraski.
There's three things parents want. They want consistency. So is, is the school moving in the right direction? Consistency, not up and down. They want competency. Do you have competent teachers and principals running these schools? And safety, period.
During these interviews, KCPS was able to provide more in-depth details about our APR results, a wider perspective of what those results mean and how we plan to sustain our improvement. The real centerpiece of KCPS's Thank You Kansas City Tour was around teachers. Dr. Bedell made visits to James Elementary School, East High School, and African-Centered College Preparatory Academy Lower Campus. This was his chance to personally express his deep sense of gratitude to students, teachers, support staff, and school leaders. KCPS was able to deliver the same sentiment directly to our neighbors and other stakeholders during tour stops at the Kansas City City Council Third District Community Meeting on February 11th and the Blue Hills Neighborhood Association Meeting on February 23rd. In addition, the message was shared with students who attended a town hall forum on February 6th at Lincoln College Preparatory Academy and with parent leaders during the DACX meeting on February 13th. The Thank You Kansas City Tour continues as we head into March and April. On March 4th, KCPS will thank teachers during a staff, fun, and food event at No Other Pub in downtown KC's Power and Light Entertainment District. While we celebrate, we continue to grind. The focus will shift to the work we are doing as a school system to sustain our improvement and ensure that all of our students are moving upwards and that we are achieving the results expected by our community.
As we are to close out this portion of the superintendent's report, I know I'm impatient. Watching all of those videos, I need to work on my hands. I use them a lot and I just, just have issues. But I wanted to, um, just before we go to the strategic plan update, really let this community know that we take the work, we take what we do seriously. This is not a game for the people that are here working in this school district. We've been able to merge a very competent staff that I think I would, I'm willing to put up against any district in this country, a mix of people that have been here and a mix of people that have come from around the country that actually know how to do this work. And our attitude is that accreditation isn't the end game for us because you can hit accreditation and still have a bunch of kids not reading at or above grade level in math or not competing at the state level. And for us, we're not going to stop until every single one of our kids reach that their highest potential. Our job is to continuously be a value add to all of our students. We will celebrate, but we need to make sure that we're competing at or above state average. We're competing at national average on NAEP and ACTs. And when you see the report that we're going to provide to you tonight on our strategic plan update, it's the truth about where we are. We have a lot of work to do and we've been very transparent about where we are. And, and ultimately, we want our community to know that while we celebrate, we know that we have a lot of work to do. Two particular individuals here, well, actually, one is the district, but Dr. Jermaine Wilson, uh, he's been an employee with Kansas City Public Schools for a total of 16 years. He served as a teacher counselor, assistant principal, and now currently serving as Director of Guidance Counseling. Dr. Wilson was recently named the Greater Kansas City School Counselor Association School Counseling Director of the Year. As the recipient of this honor, he will represent this region in the competition for the Missouri Counseling Director of the Year Award. So let's just give him a round of applause. I know he's not here. And I think it's important that everybody understand that when we try to put people in positions, we try to put people in positions where they can have the highest amount of effect for our students and Dr. Wilson is doing that with the work he's doing with our counselors. The second one on yesterday, this is the Excellence in Collaboration Award. Kansas City Public Schools was honored for our collaborative work with Giving the Basics by Nonprofit Connect, the philanthropic, uh, project of the Hunt Family Foundation. KCPS, along with the Kansas City Police Department, will receive the Excellence in Collaboration Award and formally will be recognized at an award ceremony to be held on May 1st. Giving the Basic provides basic hygiene project, products that aren't covered by government assistance to Kansas Cityans in need. The organization has built dozens of community partnerships, but in their words, "None more successful than with the Kansas City Public Schools and the Kansas City Missouri Police Department." By stocking schools and police cars with supplies and empowering school staff and patrol officers, this partnership reaches over 80,000 people in needs of items like deodorant, toothbrushes, and soap. Working together with Giving the Basics by Nonprofit Connect, we are creating system-wide change by providing dignity for all through the basic essentials. I want to give a special thanks to Lauren Grimes, who's not here. She's our Director over our nursing services. Molly Tickner and Dr. Louise Codoba, who's our Chief over Student Support Services and their team for working to facilitate and foster this critical and significant partnership. So thank you. And at this time, we will bring Jesse Lang up, who will provide the strategic plan update to our board and our community.
Good evening. Very excited to share the strategic plan mid-year progress report with the Board of Directors and the Kansas City community. Just real quickly, why we do these updates, really three main reasons. The first is to keep the Board of Directors informed as to the district's progress. Nothing that we're going to talk about tonight is going to be surprising necessarily or new, but in order to have everything in one spot, you can see all the great work that's been done. This update really is for things that took place in first semester, so from August to February, basically, January, February of this current school year. We also know that this is going to serve as a proactive communication and public accountability mechanism. So a lot of people helped us put together this plan and we want to demonstrate to them that we are following through with what we said we were going to do. And then also to really harness that support and commitment from those in our community for the district's goals. A lot of times, people are coming to KCPS and they want to know, how can we help? What can we do? This is able, we're able to use this document to point to different things that we are placing priority upon within our district. So the annual calendar for updates might look familiar. We've seen this before. But we came to in August, provided a similar presentation and a report. That was for the end-of-the-year update. In October and November, we wanted to re-engage those stakeholders, so we held our first annual strategic plan update and celebration. So if board members were able to come, we thank you for coming. We thank you, everybody who put that together. It was a great event. It was well-attended by parents. We had staff, we had faith-based leaders, uh, community leaders here in Kansas City, all those people who helped us put this together and we're really interested in seeing it move forward. So again, it's a demonstration that the district is committed to the strategic plan. Highlighted tonight is the mid-year update. So it's really two-part. We had the first part at our last board meeting, which was the presentation of our state assessment results from DESI. And then tonight, we're really going to talk about progress on some of the key actions that were selected for this school year. So there's a couple of different ways that we're going to share progress. One is this document, which all the board members have. It's a little bit thicker. It's the mid-year progress report with all the details in there. We did not have hard copies for members of the public, but it is available tonight on our website. If you would like to download it at our website with the backslash strategic plan and it's highlighted there, mid-year progress report for any who'd like to see it. We also have our scorecard available, which we did have copies of these in the lobby and all the board members should have copies of that as well. Sorry it's so big. It's almost obnoxiously big, but hopefully everybody can see it that way. If you notice, the last time that we came in August, we had a version of a scorecard. It was pretty ugly-looking. It was just an Excel spreadsheet, basically. So we're trying to make it a little more visual. This one isn't perfect. We have more tweaking that we plan on doing. But it's interesting, when we did this the first time, we didn't change any data. We just showed it differently and then people started talking about it in different ways. So it's interesting, the way that you show data, it does garner interest, you know, when you, when you have different ways to do that. So if you notice here on the scorecard, different things are highlighted. We've included the '17-'18 academic data that we were actually able to plug into this... We've included the 1718 academic data that we were actually able to plug into this scorecard at this time. It's kind of tricky, you'll notice, in a scorecard, you usually want to compare year to year to see how the district's doing. But it's important to note, in 1718, you'll see in the scorecard, various tick marks are going down, and that's because we have different assessments. So, it's really difficult to compare year to year when you have different tests.
Let me just add in on that, because last year was the state's first year of administration of the new math and ELA assessment. But what I will share with you was that the district had a net gain in proficient and advanced rates of 2.7% in English Language Arts in comparison to the regression that the state had, because everybody across the state regressed. But in math, the net gain was 4.2%. And one of the things that we've shared with our board is our goal is to try to do a gap analysis reduction against how we're performing against the state. So, last year was a baseline year. There's another assessment that's not in here that is actually comparable, but for the sake of our scorecard, we did not put that in here, and that was American Government. And American Government would be a prime example of the kind of growth that we want to see, moving from 34.6% to 41.4%. That's significant. And that's the kind of growth we want to see in terms of being able to close gaps against the state. So, we're absolutely looking forward to how our students will perform this year on math and ELA. And it'd be a great opportunity to see whether or not the, all of the investments that we've made into our schools will pay the dividends that we're looking forward to seeing.
So, important to keep in mind as we look at this scorecard, especially for members of the public. Just as the scorecard's organized, as well as our entire strategic plan, as a reminder, we have five goals for students, and each goal has three measures that we're using to see how students are doing. So, that's noted on our scorecard. And then we also have practices that adults are doing. They're called indicators within the scorecard. All of the adult work is centered around our four pillars, which is on the illustration here on the screen to the left. Pillar A is all about teaching and learning. Pillar B is our community. So, schools cannot do it alone. Pillar C is investing in our people. And pillar D is managing the whole. So, that's how we've organized the work for adults in the school district. All of those pillars then have subsequent strategic priorities that go all the way around that circle. And then to the right is how our plan is structured. So, in case you needed a little more reference for that, or if folks saw them on the way in, we had 12 examples of boards of how the plan actually works. So, again, our pillar at the top, our priority, then each priority has a set of corresponding key actions. There are over 50 key actions within our strategic plan, which is a lot, but we are taking them a little bit at a time. So, we're making progress each year. These were key actions that were selected in school year 1718. You can see, there's about 16 of those that we chose in our first year. These key actions don't go anywhere. We're still working on them this year. We just started last year, and they've continued now in this year, and they're within our report. For this school year, we've added on these additional key actions for school year 1819, which there's a comprehensive list altogether within the report, if you'd like to look at them altogether. These are the ones that we've added on for this year. We will mention just briefly some of the highlights from three of these. One is 4, or 1.4, talking about extra and co-curricular activities. This was put in the strategic plan. A lot of people were interested in seeing expansion of this for students and more opportunities for KCPS kids. And so, there's lots of things that have been done this school year so far. One thing that's been great, launched a weekly IL newsletter, celebrating Team of the Week, Student of the Week. It has schedules in there, trying to build excitement for KCPS sports. Done numerous things to increase participation for middle school sports. One thing was bringing middle school sports to Paseo, which is something that they're thrilled about, having sports at Paseo. And of course, improving the fields at East High School, which was a nice thing we were able to do this year as well. We've learned several lessons. You can see here, this is exactly how that report's structured, with accomplishments, issues, lessons, and then priorities. For one thing, we know that parent support and participation has been great at the middle school level. And so, we're trying to figure out how we can harness that and really carry that momentum over to the high school, because we've seen such a nice increase at the middle school. And then with our improvements to the field at East High School, there has been more interest and participation in sports that use that facility. So, we can see that an investment in a facility has really impacted how many students are interested then in participating in these sports. Another key action we'll highlight is 3.4, involving problem-solving teams, which we've probably heard about again this year. They've been implemented in all KCPS schools, and schools have received training. Among the schools that are successfully implementing these problem-solving teams, we have seen decreased suspensions and increased attendance. It has improved. So, that's nice. Some issues that we have, we still have inconsistent implementations. So, another thing that came up on this was coaching. We learned that we need ongoing coaching for different schools to make sure we're meeting the needs of each building, and establishing that coaching cycle to support the schools that might be struggling with implementing this with fidelity. We also need to monitor our schools to make sure that we are measuring the impact of these problem-solving teams and the things that they're trying to accomplish. And our last area to highlight is 4.3, system of academic safety nets. At the beginning of the year, when Dr. Bedell and the Cabinet chose key actions, I was really excited that this one was chosen, just because this is one that's really fully loaded. If you look and see everything that's listed under this key action, it's a lot of different things. Easing barriers to participation, things like mentoring, a lot of different safety nets that are involved. And so, we've had a lot of accomplishments. Of course, we implemented the Riot KC Student Pass Program to provide free transportation for high school students. We partnered to expand the mentoring program, partnered with Congressman Cleaver to host a recruitment event for mentors of color. There were 200 individuals that attended that event, and almost half of them are currently mentoring in KCPS schools. So, that's been nice. Some issues and challenges we've had with the mentor program, for example, student mobility has been a challenge. So, mentors are being matched with students, and then the students are moving out of the school district, you know, during the school year. And that's understandable because of students who need a mentor. It makes sense that they might be highly mobile students. And we have almost 1,000 students who are on the waitlist for a mentor. So, if anybody is interested in being a KCPS mentor, I suggest you visit our website and get involved in that as well. Things that we've learned in this process throughout the KCATA program and as well as other key actions maybe that aren't listed in this one, there's been many instances where KCPS has been invited to participate in events or meetings this year with other school districts or other government agencies in Kansas City. And I think it's important to say that in many of those instances, those other agencies are looking to KCPS to take the lead. So, KCPS is still a major player in Kansas City education, and it's come up time and time again that they are coming to KCPS for the expertise that folks have within this school district. We've also seen several priorities for the next reporting cycle that we're going to be working on, analyzing the results of that Student Pass Program, as well as implementing some other supports for these safety nets. And that's my mentor student who I put on the slide. He was very excited at the fact that he would be in the presentation, so I decided I put his picture in there. So, next steps for our strategic plan. Like I said, this report is only for the first part of the year, so we're going to continue to track things that are happening now in the second semester. So, we're doing that internally within our online software, as well as determining the key actions for next school year. So, trying to get ahead of that and align it with what we're doing with budgeting process. And we also want to share this report with KCPS stakeholders. So, all the folks who participated with us so far are going to get emails from me with the revised scorecard and this document report. Like I said, it's also on our website. And we will be updating the scorecard again. So, the board can look for the scorecard probably at least two more times before the end of the year, when we'll get additional data or information or results back from stakeholder survey and different things. We'll be able to plug in more up-to-date information.
Questions? Board member Manzur?
Thank you. This is a lot for everyone to digest, I know. And I'm really enjoying this, this visual infographic. So, a couple of questions I have. On the lessons learned, that is a, you may have said it, and I may not have heard it, is that's a process that's happening once a year, quarterly, where you sort of do a information dump, so to speak? Or when is the timing on that? When, at what point do you all gather and actually collect and then articulate, put down on paper, what some of your key lessons are, and then the priorities?
Right. So, so far, with the lessons learned in particular, we've really used that in connection with these reporting cycles. So, we've done it twice a year to really sit down and put them on paper, what the lessons learned would be. As we're going, they're implementing different things, but as far as everyone kind of coming together and understanding what the lessons are, that's when it kind of informs this process. So, we did that in August, which also informed the key actions that would be selected for this school year. So, you kind of look and see what worked and what didn't. We really kind of press people when we're filling out this document. There's always lessons that are learned, and sometimes you just don't necessarily think about that. When you do the practice of having to kind of fill out a report or think about and reflect. So, I think that has been helpful for folks so far. As far as priorities for the next reporting cycle, those have been things that have come out of this exercise. So, having to talk about accomplishments and lessons. But also, they were things that might have been determined at the beginning of the school year that just don't happen until maybe March or April. So, those become priorities because we know that they're kind of on the horizon.
So, we'll see a shift in that list, because some of those priorities will, over time, come up into our major accomplishments, and other things will have emerged, because there's always going to be a set of priorities that emerge. Is that right? The other question I have is, on the scorecard where we talk about where you show like the 2015-16, and the strategic plan was not implemented at that time, and so, is there anything that we should understand about, is there a cleaner, more rigorous way which we're collecting data so that not only ideally we'll see improvement through our efforts, but we're also going to see we can have greater assurance in the data? Because in 1516, I'm guessing, we might not have had all of the systems well in place. Is that right?
Yeah, I'll answer that. Absolutely. I think there's a couple of pieces there. First of all, the state tracks everything based on three-year data. And so, we wanted our report to adhere to the way that the state reports out, even when it's in a scenario of apple, oranges, and pineapples, because that's basically what this is. We've had multiple changes with assessments, so it's very hard to compare. And this is a question that I raised, you know, as a, as a member of the Commissioners Advisory Council. How can you accurately report this kind of data when it's three different types of assessments? But nevertheless, the state has figured out a formula, and so, we just try to adhere to that. And I think what you'll begin to see is now 1516 will come off the board. The next report will be 16. It'll be 1718 and 19. And then you'll be able to now really follow that trend data, because it's my understanding that the assessments we took last year are going to be the assessments that will stay here for, you know, the next several years. And it'll be easier for us to, I think, provide a much more cleaner, reliable, and valid report to you. Is that correct, Mike?
That's correct, except for science.
Except, yeah, except for science. And then, of course, then social studies will be rolling in the following year, because social studies won't count this year. So, we're really two years away from having all four assessments on the books, and we can do comparative analysis based on one year to the next.
Board member Oats?
Sorry. I was just going to answer. And one other thing, Ms. Manzur, that I think would really get to what you were asking about as well, that I've seen other districts do similar, is with the 1B, for example, percentage of students who are meeting standards at the end of third grade. Really, that's a cohort thing that we want to look at. So, we want to see, by the time that we've implemented this plan for those kindergartners in three years, three or four years, how are they doing? So, that's something that we're going to have to track within the strategic plan as well.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. One thing to what Dr. Bedell just said, I know that, let's see here, school year 1718 is our first year under the strategic plan. So, I guess just thinking out long-term, once we get, I personally would like to see us keep that base year as we start to build on top of that. So, once we get to 2023, we can look at that full five-year span. You talked about that we don't look at percentage, you know, the, the raw percentage of proficient advance. We look at it compared to the state. Can you tell me the reason behind that?
So, the main reason that we chose to do it that way is because of the change in the assessments, because we, we knew going into it that the assessments were going to change, and we knew that it would have an impact, not only on our students, but every student within the state of Missouri. So, a lot of discussion when we were formulating the strategic plan did kind of center around closing that gap, obviously, between our district and other districts. So, when we set those goals, we were more interested in looking at the gap measure, as opposed to the hard number, just because of the changing assessments.
Under the extracurricular activities, I see that you noted that under lessons learned, that parent support and parent participation is, is great for, for the middle school sports and a lot of times, sports in general. Do we know, have principals, building leaders, teachers been looking at ways to utilize that time with that large parent participation at all?
All right. So, I'm going to, Mr. Oats, you're asking a tough question that I can't answer. In terms of parents at the school level, teachers working directly with parents on extracurriculars, I, I would tell you, I think it varies from school to school. I mean, I am a parent too. And so, you know, I, we have children that, that participate in athletics, and, and people are very active in coming out to watch students compete at that particular school. But as we think about, you know, I, I will say this to you. It was beautiful, and I hate to say it, but it was beautiful a week ago or a week and a half ago, when Central and Southeast was playing. It was a packed house. I walked in there, and I felt that it was basically the rebirth of, of the IL from back in the 90s. And, and we saw, and we're beginning to see more and more of our parents beginning to be more involved. I think the other thing that's beautiful is because we now have football fields and track fields right directly within the communities, and they don't have to all travel over to Southeast. You should begin to see a much more significant increase. And I think from school leadership standpoint, our job is to just continuously encourage our teachers to be involved, to encourage our teachers to reach out to parents and let them know that, you know, you can walk within your community now to watch your kids compete and, and encourage it in that way. I, I don't know if I answered your question.
No, that's good. Last, last one. You said that we would expect probably one or two more updates for this year. Those items that we will be updating this year. So, what I understand, this mid-year to do is kind of close out a lot of those remaining items that were hanging from school year 2017, 2018, due to timing with APR scores and everything. And so, we, we've closed out now all of our data for 2017, 2018. And so, your next update would be progress on this school year's activities. Yes?
Right. There's a lot of things that are captured on the scorecard, though. So, the idea is not to just publish it once a year. It's to, as soon as we get information, to kind of populate it. So, if we have results from a stakeholder survey in 2019, we don't want to wait until whenever we might get results from the state of Missouri for this school year, you know, next year, because we don't know how delayed that might be. So, we want to try to provide updates as frequently as we can. So, we've actually added the date on the top of the scorecard. So, you see, it says February 2019. Hopefully, when various measures might come available, we want to be able to give you the most latest update.
But specifically on school year 2017, 2018, we are, we have closed all data points on that, looking at somebody.
Yes. I mean, at this point, what, with the official data coming in from DESI, we have, we have closed out 2017, 2018.
Okay. I want to remind my colleagues, we are in a business session, and so, if we could ask one question per person, and then we can come back around for additional questions. All right. Mr. Evans?
I hear you, Dr. Bedell, and Jesse, and most of their colleagues throw the word planning around quite a bit. And I know that organization and planning, effective organization and planning is key to the success of any organization. Because the state throws out your data late, how did that affect your planning for any school year?
Yeah, it does. It, it's a, it has a negative impact on our ability to be proactive in response to the data. And once again, I would say, last week, we had our Commissioners Advisory Council meeting, and they were asking about releasing item analysis. And they were like, at this point, do you all think we need to release it? And there were some people who were saying... And there were some people who were saying, well, we're so close to the new assessments, we don't know whether it would matter. And I said, no, I said, nah, not for us. I said, we need it. I don't care if we get it a week before the assessments because it informs our curriculum. It will let us know whether we have gaps within our curriculum. It will help us as we apply our equity policy and how we budget. Uh, so how do we develop our budget priorities based on how our kids are performing? And then most importantly, um, it gives our teachers the tools that they need to truly have an understanding around what we have to do to unpack standards to make sure that our kids are having a fair shot like everybody else at being successful. And so we, we still ha- don't have it yet. I, I had to share that unfortunate news with Cabinet yesterday, but, or two days ago, but it hurts us. And what the Commissioner has promised was that we will not have the type of delay like we had last year. So our hope is that we'll be able to get this data back sometime in the fall. To me, it's still a problem because we should get the data back a month after the window closes. Uh, and that's something that we will continue to push. And then that gives us, um, an opportunity to try to pivot and do some interventions once we hit November through, um, getting ready for that next round of assessments.
Okay, to the, uh, my, a previous speaker talked about how this information could be boiled down in other formats as it relates to consumption of the board. But one of the things we could do is just to make sure that these are also in the monitoring reports. So, um, that could also be an opportunity for us to do some reformatting. All right, any other questions? So for item one, the, thank you so much and thank you for the scorecard and repopulating or populating it. For our regular business items, the acceptance of early Head Start grant in the amount of $334,294.15, the chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present this proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a grant, um, and it helps to support our early Head Start program. We are asking the board at this time to take action on the acceptance of the $334,294.15.
Are there any ques- que- um, questions for clarification regarding this proposal? Is, it would now be in order to receive a motion to accept this proposal?
So moved.
Second.
It is moved in seconds to approve the contract for the early Head Start expansion services at Central Academy of Excellence. Is there any debate on the motion? Seeing no debate, this will be a roll call vote. Those in favor will respond yes, those opposed will respond no, the secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Mancer?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Hartsfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, there is a majority in favor of the contract for the early Head Start expansion services at Central Academy of Excellence and is approved. For three contracts with Yellow Dog Networks, one in the amount of $1,614,537.49, the other $542,389.49, and the last $441,082. The chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present this proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The administration requests, uh, that these three particular action items, um, Yellow Dog Networks, that we table this until March 13th, 2019. We would like to present the three items as a package. This is a part of our E-Rate Grant, um, services. It will require that the board will allow for the administration to spend into reserves. And, and, and we want to be able to provide the board with an update on when the reimbursements will come in for it. And so we felt that, uh, in, instead of asking the board to take action today, we wanted to make sure that we did our full due diligence of informing the board of the process. Um, and, and so we want to bring it back in two weeks and we want to have you take action on it in a package form for all three.
Are there any clarifying questions? Yes, Board Member Wolfsey?
So I thought there was some deadline. Are we, okay.
Yeah, 27th of March.
Okay.
My understanding.
The motion is to table the three Yellow Dog contracts until the March 13th, 2019 board member, board meeting. We would now receive a, receive a motion?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Is there any debate on this motion? Hearing no debate, this will be a roll call vote. Those in favor will respond yes, those opposed will respond no, the secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Mancer?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Hartsfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Rob-
Yes, there is a major- majority in favor to table the three Yellow Dog contracts until the March 13th, 2019 board meeting and is approved. Now we, um, are addressing the approval of our fis- fiscal year 19 comprehensive budget amendment one. The chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present this proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we will have Ms. Erin Thompson, who will present the comprehensive budget amendment one to the board, for the board to take action on tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're asking, uh, the board to approve our first amendment to our budget. We received additional $15,810,273 to our budget. Our, uh, budget will go from $242,976,122 to $258,786,395. As you see, the revenue and expenditures balance, uh, the $15,810 consists of our C grants, Title I program grants of 5.8 million, our Head Start program, 4.9. This all occurred after the original budget was, uh, approved, exceptional entitlement of 1.2. We have a breakfast program and child nutritional services of $927,000, and that includes equipment. We have our CTE grant, which is a performance grant, and Perk- Perkins grant of $453,355. We received a School Smart Grant KC for professional development and family engagement at our schools for $489,630. We have our Early Childhood Program grant from Kaufman Foundation of $395,835. We have a Block Family grant of $100,000 for Northeast High School. We have other donations that totaled to about $464,375. One is the Greater Kansas City Community Foundation, which was a literacy grant. It was for $87,793. We also got, um, from the KCPS Education Foundation, $104,107. So that makes up our $15,810. And, uh, as you come down our spreadsheet here, you see we are balanced. The 1.2 million that the board has approved for us to go over our budget is for the I-Ready and Pearson Math at the beginning of the year. We have also, board has approved us to have, uh, laptop computers of 2 million. We have a reserve balance of tech- for the technology plan for FY17 of 1.1. So that brought us down to an ending fund balance of $69,178,566, which brings us to about 26% of reserve level. We have restricted fund balances. In that restricted fund balance, we have capital projects of 7.6, mainly the remainder of Lincoln Middle. We have a health insurance balance of 1.8. And we have child nutrition services, they have about 4.8, uh, restricted balance. That leaves us an ending balance projected through 630 of $52,231.07, which is 20% reserve level.
Any questions? It would now be in order for us to make a motion to approve the fiscal year 19 comprehensive budget amendment one.
Move to, move to approve the comprehensive budget amendment one.
Second.
It is moved in second to approve the amendment to the fiscal year 2019 comprehensive budget. Is there any debate on this motion? Seeing none, will the secretary, um, this will be a roll call vote. Those in favor will respond yes, those opposed will respond no, will the secretary call the roll?
Ms. Mancer?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Hartsfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, there is a majority of the board in favor of the amendment to the fiscal year 2018, 2019 comprehensive budget and is approved. The chair, now for the matter of the student, Transportation of America Incorporated in the amount of $45 million, estimated total not to exceed for three fiscal years, beginning 2019 to 2020. The chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present this proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I know at this time, we will have, uh, Ms. Linda Quinley, who will conduct the presentation to the board and to the community. I think this is a great opportunity for me to, uh, definitely express to the bus drivers that KCPS values everything that you all do for the students in this city, your hard work and your efforts. There are some of you in this audience that I have spoken to personally, uh, and you do a phenomenal job. And some of you, every single day, show up, you do your job at a high level, you value your craft, and we are very appreciative of that. Whatever decision this board makes, you know, we will respect that and we will move forward with whatever, uh, the new beginnings are if we're continuing on with First Student. But know at the end of the day, that if you are an employee and you've done a phenomenal job, I would not sit here and fret regardless of what potentially may happen with the decisions because we need valued employees like you are to help service this school district. You are the front line. You are the first ones that our kids see and generally the last people that our kids will see. And that's very critical, that you set the tone for them when they enter that bus and when they leave, to give them a level of comfort that everything's going to be okay and that you will be there waiting on them in the morning. So I want you all to know that we value you, we appreciate everything that you do, and we appreciate everything that you will continue to do. Linda Quinley.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Bedell, and our many public who are here because of the significance of one of the largest contracts that this board considers as it comes up. I, um, I agree with Dr. Bedell. One of the reasons this is so important is because our bus drivers and our bus experience are the first and last part of the day for nearly 11,000 children in our community. So this is a critical and important function. I wanted to start by thanking the people who have worked on this project. And we'll look a little bit at our timeline, you'll see that it has been a significant amount of work. We had, um, a much larger committee than in past. Historically, there would have been two or three people involved in the process. We wanted to make sure that representatives from the various departments and programs across, across the district who utilize services of student transportation were involved in this process. We relied very heavily on Mr. Larry Wiseman, who is our purchasing manager, to run the process and assure that it complied with policy and statute and the RFP that was written. And then, of course, we use legal service as well. You deserve a huge, um, thank you because your decision a year ago to allow us to purchase the bus facility really did help us have a more robust process than we have in the past and a lot more people at the table. So we, we really appreciate that. So I wanted to start with an explanation of the two various models in transportation. And Mr. Bill- Mr. Billigmeyer actually kind of referenced this earlier. We operate under a transportation system with two primary partners. We have, um, day-to-day management and routing that Transpar currently performs for us. And then we have our regular routes and our activities and those things that First Student provides. Then we also have cabs, as you well know. We have no KCPS staff that are dedicated to transportation at this point in time under this model. The model that I refer to as a traditional school model is one where the bus driver, bus, the bus provider, provides that daily transportation for our students and then also is responsible for route creation and management. That is what you'll see in most districts across the state and across the country. And then the district would have an employee whose job is to oversee that provider, manage the contracts, manage the budget, instead of a third party managing the budget for us, and serve as that connect, connector to principals and families. In Missouri, we are one of three districts of the traditional districts who use this model. So we went into this process, and the reason this is important is we wanted to know, we wanted to make an evaluation, a determination of which really is better. What's better for KCPS and what's gonna serve our families at a higher level? So we issued the RFP, um, after you had authorized the purchase of that lot. And one of the reasons that you did that, and really, again, it came true, is to hope that we would attract as many possible partners to the table and we would have a lot of options to consider. We wrote the RFP, um, this time. In the past, the management company has written the RFP and been largely responsible for this process. So we rewrote the RFP, created it ourselves, and we intentionally aligned the management contract to come due at the same time as the busing contract so that we could open that up. Whereas in the past, um, the management would have been considered separately. That would have been something the district managed and transportation would have been considered separately and the management company would have allowed that. So this allowed for a more objective process for the district and, um, we feel like it, it really made it more robust. The RFP was rewritten to encourage bidders to propose, propose any or all of the following options because, again, we're looking for the best model for Kansas City public schools. We specifically stated in the RFP that they could bid the current management contract. They could bid the current daily transportation and activity services. They could bid our alternative options like early childhood special education or homeless or something like that. They could bid technology on a standalone basis or a combination of any of the above or an alternative to any of the above. Because what we wanted to make sure was that we, um, we knew that we were getting the best possible proposal. We shared, um, that KCPS is not the transportation industry expert. The people who came to the table and put their time into putting proposals together for us are really the transportation industry experts. So we wanted to rely on them when they came forward with their proposals to suggest to us, based on their tremendous amount of experience and contracts they have in place, which model they felt would work for us the best. We held a pre-bid meeting prior to the submission of the proposal. That included a walkthrough of the facility. In that meeting, we reiterated our desire for innovative proposals that created the best practice and again reminded our bidders of these specific items that were listed in the RFP as options for the way we would look at, at proposals. The committee members, some, a, a group of the committee members reviewed each proposal. There were several, um, three-inch binders that took a lot of hours to read, so we appreciate that effort. Our hope there was to reduce the number of, um, interviews that we would have by being able to screen out some proposals. We weren't able to do that. At the end of the day, all of the compliant bids, um, those bidders were invited in for an interview opportunity. The last time, um, the last time this was bid in 2016, 2014, there was only one respondent for each of these. We invited six partners in, potential partners in, for this process. So a much lengthier process than we're accustomed to. The committee did rank those individually, um, for their perception, from their lens and their role in the district, as to which offer would provide the best service and the best product for our families. Purchasing weighted the cost differentials and contract work began with the best overall bidder after all of that work was complete. Here's your timeline, I won't walk you through it, but we basically began last August with that total rewrite of the RFP done entirely by the district. Then we went through the various inappropriate meetings and interviews. Our bidders had an opportunity, once they're, they received the, um, RFP, to ask questions on four different occasions. Everyone who was in the process received back the answers to those questions in writing so that they could all have the same information as they came forward and provided their final proposal. The bid ta- uh, the bids were opened publicly here in this room, um, with everyone in attendance who, um, who provided a bid. As we came down to the committee's, um, rankings of vendors by choice, we began working with the, the highest, the vendor who received the highest ranking around that contract language negotiation. And when I say that, I, I'm not talking about negotiating the terms of their bid because their bid is their bid as placed on bid day. But we talk about, you know, what their insurance language looks like versus ours. We o- are we okay with, um, oh, there's this term that I always forget, indemnification and, and what those kind- So the lawyers start talking, basically, to make sure that the contract is compliant for Missouri and compliant with our policies. And then here we are tonight with you with our final recommendation. When we began this process, we really, um, were looking for the best design for transportation and management and student bus services. So we, we wanted the best product, but we also were looking for efficiencies. We've talked about the operational burden of the budget and our goal to reduce it over time, so both were considered. But our goal was to award the best bid and, and that was appro- But our goal was to award the best bid, and that was appropriate and that was stated in the RFP. And the features we were looking for: an improved quality of fleet that serve our students, improved parent and school technology access, improved driver training, job quality, performance, and retention. We want our drivers to be satisfied and happy in their job because that's important to the experience on the bus every day. On-time, reliable service for our families, and then a partnership that will work with us to really dig in and find as many efficiencies as we can and better our system and the experience for our kids. We wanted to share with you, as we were starting this, how this ties back to the strategic plan. It is important that our buses be a safe, healthy environment for our kids, so priority, or pillar A, priority one. We also want to make sure that our drivers have continued training, and we'll look at those models a little bit. We want them to be, to master their craft. And then pillar D, priority twelve, we want effective operations as well. So what did we get back in the way of responses? Four bus providers bid the service, which is three more than the last time when the opening was held on twenty thousand sixteen. So our process did work, and it did get us a lot more options at the table. One alternative student transportation bid was received to do just services for special education and/or homeless children that need special transport. We received one technology-only bid, and there were two qualified contract management bids. One was provided as an alternate to the bus bid, and one was an actual separate management contract. We learned some great things in this process. We learned that industry standard today is a mobile app, and we're going to talk with you a little more about that, that tracks bus location, expected time of arrival, so mom and dad or whoever's sitting at home can see where the bus is and what the ETA is, how long until my bus gets there. One of the things that is really exciting about this app is, as you know, the management company sits outside my office back here, and I get here when they do in the morning, and so I hear the calls, where's my bus, that kind of thing. We should really dramatically reduce the amount of calls and reduce the need for staff here taking those calls because now parents are going to have that in their hands, and it's going to be a part of their day-to-day lives. We learned also that higher-quality video has become available at a much higher level. Wi-Fi on buses is more accessible and more affordable than it was five years ago even. New fuel options are providing ways to transport kids with fewer emissions, better performance of the bus, and then help us manage fuel costs over time. And we saw from all of our vendors enhanced driver training, really focusing on skills, student interactions, and some of them talked to us specifically about how they train drivers to focus on bullying and de-escalation. The best bid determination for busing was determined, again, focusing on these criteria with the cost of the proposal being what we considered last, because we were really looking for what's best for our kids day-to-day, hoping that money wouldn't get too much in the way of that. So the next several slides we're going to go through are information directly out of the responses that we received from our various bidders that were some of those items of priority for us as we went through. And the first one, so again, this is information as provided by our bidders. The first one is fleet, and where you see bold, those are points that were of great interest to us as a committee and things that we saw as real positives in each individual proposal. Many were going to bring brand-new buses on day one next year with our current vendor, going to roll in new buses over a three-year period, a major portion of the fleet. You'll see that we had one bidder who offered to provide propane buses, and we'll talk about that a little later, that being STA, Student Transportation of America. I'm not going to read you each line of those because I know you guys have looked at this for a while now. So the next slide then is technology options. The parent app that I've talked about was available from all of our vendors. Two of them shared specifically that it's available in Spanish. It may be available in Spanish by some of the others, but that wasn't shared with us. Wi-Fi on the buses. Three, offered unlimited data. Audio/video recording, you can see that all of them had systems that they shared with us that were pretty exciting. And then student tap-on and tap-off. So if we wanted to use a system where a student had a badge similar to mine and they tap on the bus, now I've electronically tracked that that child has gotten on, and then I'm able to electronically track where that child gets off. Also, we have a very, I feel so sorry for drivers during bus count week, transportation count week, because it's a manual process for the most part to say who was on my bus. This would help with that in an automated fashion as well. Driver training and retention, again, we're sharing with you the information that was shared with us in the RFP and in the interviews that each of these partners came to. Two of our vendors promised to take the current collective bargaining agreement in place with our drivers today and give them significant increases to those, one with even a signing bonus. We asked our companies to share with us, because we wanted to rate driver satisfaction in some way, their driver turnover information. Some provided their companies, some provided this region, and First Student provided us their local information, and so that's what you see there. Driver training, you can see varies, a significant amount of hours as compared to what we've had historically. And then driver program features. Each of these partners offered some items that were pretty interesting. The ST1 Cares Foundation is actually a foundation that STA has in place that supports families of employees during certain times in their life that are difficult or tragic, and was one that was really of note to us. Safety programs, they all talked a lot about safety because, of course, it's one of the most important things in our industry, is safe transportation for our children. We ask for, in the middle column there, we ask for preventable accident rate per millions of miles. One didn't provide that information. They provided a loss run instead, which we could not do the math to correlate back to this ratio. First Student gave us Kansas City only. We do expect to see a little higher rate in an urban environment, but the other two are very comparable and help you see that they average less than one preventable accident per million miles as reportable. And then the Missouri Highway Patrol Safety inspections, those who have a Missouri presence, which they all do in some manner, shared with us how they have fared on those Missouri Highway Patrol Safety inspections of their buses. Then we asked them about staffing, and this was one of the items when we brought them in for interviews that we said, please share with us specifically, you know, talk with us about who you're going to have here locally on staff, because we know that all of our partners, potential partners, have large corporate national supports, but we really wanted to talk about who's going to be here. And so you see here, kind of by category, what they proposed. These, again, are what was in their original RFPs as opened on bid day. And STA stood out to us because they did offer right out of the gate to add two routers and a trip coordinator to their staff here, understanding that we could potentially also go with a management company, and that would be duplication. But that was something that really stood out to us as we looked at their proposal, because that is about fifty percent of the staff that currently works under the Transpar contract and management. Then we just, we wanted to know about their companies. What is their strength? What is their history? How big are they? These, of course, are the top, the first three we had listed there are the top, the largest in the country, I believe. Throughout this, we've been listing these for you in the committee's preference order. And so you can see that the STA was at the top, Durham, and First Student, and then North Central Illinois, based on the final rankings. But all of these companies have good project teams, they are large in size, they are financially stable, and they've been around for a while. MBE/WBE participation, we know this is something that we really are wanting to focus on. So most of our vendors said, you know, when awarded, we're going to really come in and pursue. Some of them said, these are specific people we're already talking to, some didn't list any yet. And then Student Transportation of America specifically shared that they would like to help us find a sub- or prime-fuel provider, which would be a fairly major contract for us as compared to most of our MBE/WBE contracts. All of our vendors talked to us, and we expect all of our vendors, when they come to the table, to work really closely with us and refine our routing in order to save, reduce the number of buses we have on the road, provide savings to the district, and reduce that demand for substitute drivers so that we improve our daily fill rate, and we have a hundred percent of our buses running every day. We believe that all of them will work with us really diligently to do that, and again, all expressed great expectation that when particularly they have control of routing, that they are able to make that happen. So what is a best bid determination again? We ranked, looking at all of these things, hoping that we were going to find a company with the best quality fleet, a great parent app, really good student technology that gives our principals and building administration access to audio/video as quickly as possible to help manage student discipline on our buses. We really wanted to focus on the driver training retention. Company and partner, who are we dealing with on a day-to-day basis? And what are our expectations of them to be able to manage on-time, reliable service for us every day? And then the cost of the proposal. At the end of all of those evaluations, with independent evaluations by each of the six evaluators, Student Transportation of America fell out on top as the best bid submitted. So we're going to get into a lot of numbers here, and it's kind of complicated, so I want to walk through it a little carefully with you. The primary line of cost inside a bus transportation contract is day-to-day route. You know, what does it cost to get our kids to and from school every day? So on this slide, what we're looking at, assuming a hundred and sixty routes, so that we could compare apples to apples. Some of them said, yes, we can do less right out of the gate, but we wanted to look at everything. So just the primary routes for our K-12 regular and special education students, the cost of buses plus monitors, you see here by year, and there's the five-year total possible in this contract proposal. First Student was the least expensive in this category, with STA being right about a million dollars behind in the five-year model. You see the difference there is about seventy-five thousand in year one, and the difference gets greater over time, and that is because of the annual escalator, which normally is largely about what they're going to be able to do for their employees and additional compensation year after year. There are additional components of the pricing that you have to add to those numbers, and those include some of these services that we have on a regular basis. We do have shuttles daily that serve our CTE program and various shuttles around the district for other trips and activities, after-school bus activities. Interestingly, you can see that in both of those columns, our top three were pretty close. So we know we got a good competitive process there because, you know, you just see consistency in numbers, and then you know that's what you have. Again, we ask about Wi-Fi on our buses. We want to be able to put Wi-Fi on a certain number of buses so that, in particular, when our kids are traveling to trip, so we're going to have them on a bus for a long point of time, they can do their homework and be, you know, good use of that time. So all of them did offer Wi-Fi to us. Three of them offered unlimited data, which we think is really necessary because, you know, we'd like to have several kids on there doing that all the time. We talked specifically about live audio and video. This is really important to our principals because it is how they help resolve discipline issues on a bus, and we want to work with our bus partner to manage student discipline. So the better the quality and the faster we can get access to that video is really important. There's a significant variance in this, and it's all about the system that they've proposed because there are a large number of systems out there. The parent app, three of the four bidders included the parent app in their cost of routing or cost of daily busing that we looked at on the previous slide. Student tap-on and tap-off, STA included that in their proposal. The others have some small annual fees for those. I want to talk for a minute about early childhood special education. This price is assuming double tiers, because you can't have a single, a double, or a triple, but again, to get consistent comparison. We looked at double tiers for ECSE routes. We had ECSE representative on the team, and of course, service was highly, highly important to them because they do, our ECSE children can be, they're very fragile, and they require a lot of extra care and attention. So you see the variance in those annual amounts there, moving from five-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand up to nine-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars. We aren't considering those as a cost indicator to us because, as you remember, we've talked about ECSE is the only fully-funded program left in public education, and so there wouldn't be an operating budget impact behind the ECSE piece because it is fully funded. We ask for references, and we're sharing a couple with you here. Johnston, Iowa says, "STA continues to design and operate a system of service and communication that's assured our district continuous, reliable, high-quality, and timely transportation expectations for our students and their families." Center, Missouri, our neighbor district, "Thank you for your service you provide to our athletic and activity department at Center. Our daily changes and surprises," we have those in activities, "have been met with service and gratitude from our onsite team. Buses have always been ready and on time for our teams, coaches, and students. We have nothing but a great experience with STA." STA did share in their response to the RFP that they have a ninety-five percent company-wide customer retention rate. It was reflective in the references that we received. So what will the STA contract provide? A corporate culture of compassion, caring, and customer service that was evidenced in their RFP and their interview as they talked with us about what was important to them. A fleet of new propane buses. So STA offered, in their proposal, the traditional bus that was part of the general RFP. We also said, if you want to provide an alternate that is more green, please do so. And they did. In their original proposal, they said, we would provide propane buses. The advantage to a propane bus, of course, is emissions. You know, we know that that lessens the impact on the environment, but it's been a hot topic in all of the student transportation reading and literature for the last couple of years. Drivers enjoy driving them more. These buses are more responsive, they drive more like a car than a great big bus, so drivers tend to be happier driving them. They warm up more quickly, you don't have to get there as early as on these cold mornings with bad wind chills to get them started, to make sure they're going to run and we're going to get to roll off the lot on time. So those are some advantages to propane buses. It's important to note that a propane bus costs about ten thousand dollars more in the original purchase than your traditional diesel bus will, which is about one-point-five million dollar higher investment than STA would make in the original purchase of buses. The mobile app will be available for free to all families. GPS systems that improve those communications. We really want to focus on that because it's one of the greatest complaints of our family is not knowing where their buses are. Leading-edge audio and video technology, the system they offered is going to allow for really rapid turnaround to schools because it has, as you pass the gate and you get in the perimeter, everything automatically downloads and is immediately available, then we can make it available at a much higher rate than having to go physically get the tapes. Leading, I'm sorry, commitment to current bus staff, they made a clear commitment to work with the current bus staff with a promise to prioritize the hiring of all current personnel who meet the requirements, and that commitment to a higher rate of pay for all employees than their current CBA calls for. And we know there'll be a partner who is bringing ideas to reduce those fuel contracts and reduce costs and increase our MBE participation. You met Mr. Wilkie and Mr. Prince earlier, who are here. They are the primary staff assigned to this transition, if you choose to award them a contract tonight, and will be onsite as early as next week to begin meeting with current employees of our transportation provider in order to start talking about how they would transfer to STA. Then there was a second portion, which was the management component. So again, historically, that would have been done separately in an off-year. We put this together, which made, it made certainly the work more challenging because we had to look at the variety of proposals. We had two companies who responded to the management component of the bid. First Student, First Transportation Solutions, which is a sister company of First Student, bid a separate management contract, including the items that you see there, oversight of the contracted service providers, managing our Medicaid program, managing the budget, overseeing the homeless student transportation, which is commonly cabs, and address and resolve day-to-day customer service issues. Durham offered an alternate bus bid that included routing inside of it. So we consider- So we considered both of those for the management component. Our current provider for management services will not be back with us next year, and so these were the two management offers that we had on the table to consider. So let's look at what is inside those management components. The top row there shows the current vendor's staff. They have six full-time and one part-time staff that, again, work back here. So they have management. They have two routing analysts and one trip coordinator. If you remember back to what we talked about, STA offered in their primary bus bid originally, those three positions are already included in the cost that STA has proposed. And then they have one and a half customer service reps. She may be a little more than half, but there are people back there taking those calls. Again, we expect that the number of people we need taking calls, considering that your routing folks and your trip coordinator also do that, will be reduced because of this family app. So six and a half might not be necessary once we get that staff in there. Durham added routers, two routers, and that was all they offered in their management proposal. And then First Student created a fairly similar model to what Transpar does today. They didn't offer routers specifically, because they're going to do that, I think, in Montana, where they do most of their routing, but offered other management staff for a total of five FTE. So as we look at the cost on this, our current Transpar contract annually is $670,000. Durham's alternate is right around $250,000 a year totaling $1.3 million. First Transportation's management bid totals $2.9 million over the five-year total. And they did offer in their bid that if they got the management contract but not the bussing contract, that would be 25% higher, and so there's a three-point, roughly $6 million proposal for management services by them. So our recommendation is that we work like the other 514 districts in Missouri and most across the country, and work with one provider, one contract, in what I'm referring to as the traditional model. That then that way, KCPS directly controls contractor oversight and management, and management of the budget, which is pretty important, that we, in fact, would be in charge of the budget instead of a company who worked for us. To do that, we would need to create a Director of Transportation Department internally. That would be a staff of two. And so we would have the three, the two routers and the trip coordinator in the STA bid, and we'd have our two staff, so that collectively, we would have five staff doing, providing the services that Transpar provides today. We'd move to one provider contract. We believe that not only would that create routing efficiency, but it would get us to the single contract. Sometimes, a morning we have an issue, or there's a game that we didn't have a bus for, or something like that, there's always a little bit of gray of who's responsible. Was it the management company? Was it the bus company? So having one partner to work on this will really make that easier for us to resolve our issues when they come up, because we'll only have the director working with one company. We want to work with the new provider to determine the best approach to managing the current use of cabs for homeless and other special populations and alternative solutions. So that would be sort of a phase two, is how do we consider getting as many children out of cabs and into some other mode of transportation as we can? So the cost of the options and our recommendations. Again, to the far right, I want to remind you going back, these are the primary services, K-12 daily bussing. We've added in a line for what it would cost us to have a Department of Transportation, again, two FTE that we're proposing, so that in the five-year total for STA, with their proposal and our two staff, we're at $61.7 million for the primary bus service. And then you see Durham's price as the second-choice vendor and First Student's price as the third-choice vendor. It's important to note that we believe, the more and more that we process this and talked about how we make sure that we are taking care of KCPS, that if we have, our current situation works with our two contracts, because there's no relationship between the management company and the bus company. And so in these situations where we would have just one vendor, giving them full control of the budget, full oversight of the contracts that their sister company is running, we believe that it would be in the best interest of the district if we considered any other proposal than STA's, to still go ahead and put our transportation department into place. We want to own the budget. We want to own the contract management, and we want to make sure we're watching out for ourselves in that. So we'll look at that in just a minute. Our recommendation, again, now that we've looked also at the management component, is that we contract with Student Transportation of America for three years, with two one-year options for renewal of bussing, at a not-to-exceed annual amount of $14.5. That is enough money to allow for that ECSE that's federally funded, those activity trips, the CTEs, and those other shuttles that were all pretty equitably priced between our vendors, and that day-to-day service. That we also create a department, a Director of Student Transportation Department, to, again, oversee the contracts and service, and we would utilize some savings from going to the single model instead of having the two contracts. Change our current fuel arrangement so that KCPS purchases directly and saves on fuel taxes. Right now, First buys that fuel, and we have a shared costing situation, so we are reimbursing a little bit of fuel tax, that if we're being the buyer, that fuel tax goes away, because we, of course, are exempt. And work with STA to contract with an MBE sub for fuel delivery. So the cost of our recommendation, K-12 bussing and routing, or management services, bus plus monitors, in the five years, and because we've mixed these, we're having to show you a few varieties of the money piece. The current contracts we have are listed there in the first column for you. If we continue our current contracts for the next five years, you would see that it's going to be roughly $64,700,000 for those primary services. STA's proposal, that does not require a secondary management contract, because they included two routers and a trip coordinator in their proposal, added to a KCPS transportation department for five years, totals $61,688,000. That is $3 million less than sticking with our current setup of the two contracts and moving forward for five years. First Student with a First Transportation Solutions management contract, you see those listed separately, is a total of $63.5 million for the primary component. Again, we're going to recommend that if we have one company doing all work, that we probably need someone in-house. And so we've added in that cost of KCPS transportation department. And then our total cost would be $64,700,000 for First Student's primary routing service, which is $3 million more than the STA proposal. And then Durham at $67 million for both, $68.5 when we put in the cost of having a transportation department, so nearly $7 million more. Again, the ECSE costs are not in here, because they're fully funded, and they won't impact the operating budget. When we add in the cost of STA's higher camera system, it does reduce that $3 million savings between where we are today or First Student to about $2.7 million. But we are really comfortable and confident that this makes for a best model for KCPS. Again, gets us to that single-contract environment, improves what's happening, because they're going to roll in 160 new buses for the start of school. And that's pretty exciting. For all of our students to be on a brand-new bus on the first day of school next year, for all of our drivers to drive a brand-new bus on the first day of school next year, for all of our drivers to receive compensation higher than their current CBA calls for, and for our families to have that app in their hand. This is a proposal that we believe truly is the best bid for KCPS.
Right, questions? Board Member Oats?
Chair, does the one-question rule still apply?
No. I mean, yes. I'm sorry. So used to say no to you, Mr. Evans. No, yes. One question per person. We will go around, if you have additional questions, we'll go back around as many times as we need to, and we'll start with Board Member Oats.
Thank you for the presentation, the very full presentation. So my question is around, back in, what was it, April now? The district passed its Collaboration for Education guidelines. We created the whole tiered model and everything. And one of the tiers was around looking at sharing bus services, transportation services, with charter programs, other educational programs, things like that. What assessment about any of these bids, but specifically the one you're asking us to take action on, has them able to accommodate if we find a partner, if a couple of schools come in? Do we know?
Yeah, that's a great question. And we actually, in the RFP, we told our possible bidders that we wanted to partner and create efficiencies in our Kansas City system as much as possible, as long as those additional buses and additional schools didn't impact the service for KCPS. And so all of our providers agreed that they would be able to do that. And one of the reasons they will is because while we have a three-tier system, we don't have a perfect three-tier system. You know, we might have a bus that runs two tiers and then is off, or one and then off and runs three. And so as our schools that would want to partner with us come in to, if they can align their start times to ours, then they can slide right into this, and we'll share in the cost of that three-tier route and be able to create savings for us and them. And so all of our vendors were prepared to do that, and STA confirmed that they absolutely would. Again, focusing first, that we want to take care of KCPS and not jeopardize service to our families, but as we can take them in, that we would do that.
Board Member Wolfsey?
I don't know if I have so much of a question. I just really want to say thank you to you and the team that did it.
Excuse me, Board Member Wolfsey, that would be out of order. We're asking for questions in terms of clarification of the presentation, and then we'll do our debate in the comments afterwards. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I don't have any questions, Dan.
Okay.
Board Member Manther?
Okay, so just, I know that you've kind of ranked some of the criteria, where the timeliness, safety, technology, capacity, the app, et cetera. So one of the conversations we've had repeatedly over the last couple of years is around timely arrival of students, because that affects the ability for the students to meet their attendance and for us to achieve our attendance criteria. So did you rank, I wasn't sure if you placed a higher priority on that rating of timeliness? You know, I was just trying to get a sense of, because we know that has so many other implications for, it has a ripple effect for us in many ways.
Yeah, it absolutely does. It's one of the key features. We need our kids at school on time so they can have breakfast, and they don't miss instructional minutes. You are helping us with that by giving us a little more room inside those start times next year. But there's no way for our bidders to tell us how they're going to do that until they get in to the... So we weren't able, we talked with them about it, and they talked with us in their interview. They each had an hour and a half to share about their company. Again, we shared with you the information they shared with us. But it's not measurable at this point, but they understand that it's a priority. You heard Mr. Wilkie say that he was here a couple of weeks ago, and he heard Dr. Shepherd and Mr. Reynolds' presentation about attendance being a challenge for us, and that they believe they can be a huge part of that by really working on on-time delivery.
When you all deliberated, the committee, you talked about the individual perceptions of the best product and services. So can you tell me what was that based on? Was it based on what was just in the proposal? Or was it based on other factors in terms of prior performance?
Sure. All of those things come into play. And so we had the full proposals. And then when we invited our vendors back for their hour-and-a-half time with us to talk about themselves, answer our questions, we had given them some specific things to address, so that we made sure they talked about staffing, make sure you talk about your fleet, make sure you talk about your training, make sure you talk about your safety. So we actually heard from all of them in that interview process, those things. And then we had people on the committee who had worked with Durham in the past. Of course, everyone has worked with First Student. And so they used their personal experiences in those evaluations as well, in addition to all of the information that we received during that back-and-forth conversation in the interview.
Board Member Hartsfield?
If you would, could you take me back to your timeline, please?
Yes. Several slides back, but let's find it. We gave you a lot of slides on this tonight, but it's all important information. Here you go.
Looking at the December 31st, 2018, that is when you're talking about these hour-and-a-half pieces?
No, the December 11th and 12th were the interviews with the bidders. And then at the end of that day, we took the rankings from the individual bidders. Mr. Wiseman accumulated them and said STA appears to be our committee's choice. And so Mr. Wiseman and I began with a call with STA to talk about that contract language, to begin working to see if we could get to an agreeable contract.
September 25th, I mean, 21st, that's just with STA?
Correct.
Okay.
Is this another question? Or, I'll come back.
And then the following, it says September 27th. That's when it was brought to the board, the recommendation?
February 27th.
Okay, no contract was signed prior to that, no agreement from anyone?
Well, you have in your packet the contract that our legal and their legal worked out through that negotiation piece, the contract language negotiation. You have that signed by STA in your contract, but until the board makes an authorization and signs, then the contract is...
So they signed it prior to us, prior to coming to us?
Right. That is our common practice. We normally bring you contracts already signed by the vendor.
Board Member Oats?
So on the local non-driver staffing, so we, and I think it's like 10 slides ahead if you're looking for it.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that it? Did I pass it?
No, no.
Yep, there we go. Okay, yes.
So on here, we don't have, First Student was what they currently provided as the incumbent, but we have 12 office staff, nine...
I'm sorry, I wasn't on the right one yet. Here we go. Sorry. Right.
Okay, so my question was, do we have an idea of how many employees that First Student had right now? And do we feel...
In these roles?
Yeah, and then with the 12 office staff that we have, do we feel that that's capacity to handle this work appropriately?
Yeah, that's another really good question. I can't tell you exactly what they have. I know some of them, because we work with them, Michael that you met earlier, and then we work with several of their staff. The staffing size here in STA's proposal is very standard for a district our size, particularly when you're doing that routing and trip coordination. So to answer that question, we are comfortable and confident with the 12 office staff that they'll provide. Of course, they all also shared with us, you know, the number of mechanics they'll have, the fuelers they'll have, and the drivers they'll have. Those are all pretty consistent and standard. These were where we saw differences.
Board Member Manther?
As you developed the RFP and identified your priorities and criteria, and then you've come forth with a recommendation, how do the components of this proposal, how does that stand up in looking at neighboring suburban districts? Are you, is this proposal taking us, bringing us forward such that the elements that would be evident within our proposal are kind of core components that you would find in some of the neighboring districts? Is this bringing us to a different level of having other unique capabilities, such as the app?
Five years ago, the app wouldn't have been as common a thing. They, some had them, but they were charges, and the families paid those. So what we're going to have in this component, in this contract, and most of our vendors offered, is probably a much better proposal, a much better service for our families than most districts are enjoying. They understood that it was important for us, for the family communication component, and so they provided that. They understood that the audio/video was important, because we want to help manage student discipline at a high level. They understood that the quality of the ride to and from every day is important, and that driver satisfaction is important. So I think that we really got nice, well-rounded proposals that are going to give us a better quality service than most of our neighboring districts, and then a lot of districts in the state of Missouri.
You mentioned in your presentation about an original proposal. So what, in comparison to what? Was there a subsequent proposal?
No, no. By original, what I'm stating is that everything you're seeing is exactly... By original, what I'm stating is that everything you're seeing is exactly what was provided in the original proposals offered by our vendors on the day we opened them, on December fourth.
Yes, Board Member Lewis?
I'm sitting here, so, thinking this constantly. So I'm very excited about the thoroughness, so I always appreciate that. When you talk about a whole fleet of new buses, what happens if they don't, what happens, I mean, if for some reason there's a delay in production, delay in delivery, delay in anything, is there a backup fleet for us to be using if we go with this company?
There wouldn't be a backup fleet, but the reason that your timing is so very important is this is bus order season. And so I'd be happy to ask Mr. Wilkie could probably better answer that for you than I can, because I'm not the one that has to order buses and see to it they get here. But they have, they've shared with us the importance of their timeline, that if they order buses by next week, then they'll have them starting to arrive over the summer months. They'll come in groups, you know, when forty are complete, the vendor will send them our way. There'll be a parade of new buses coming down the interstate, and they need all of them here by August first, because we want our drivers to get accustomed to them, we want to do dry runs in them, we want to make sure they get all licensed and inspected and all of that. But we are on a good timeline right now. Industry standard, if you're ordering this time of the year, you'll be in good shape when school year starts.
Board Member Oats?
Just one clarifying question. One clarifying question, are we being asked to take any, is approving this also approving the...
The recommendation for the, yes.
The director, okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Yes, that's an important component. We need to, yeah, that's really, I do need to make sure that you understand that we can't do one without the other, and so it's important.
Board Member Wolfsey?
Thank you. I have a question. On page fifty, I noticed when you went through the presentation, that actually you paused on the driver training component here, that that seemed to be something that you were looking for. Can you expound on that just a little bit about what you're expecting to see here with both the classroom and behind-the-wheel hours?
So, what we want to know is that our drivers get plenty of time behind the wheel with someone, with someone, who really is right there for them. The classroom hours are going to be everything from general safety, student behavior management, personal management, how do you manage yourself as a driver? And we talked a lot about training. We talked about the importance, student support being in the room, they wanted to know, how do you train your drivers to de-escalate and to handle bullying situations? We had a lot of that conversation. STA had a really great, a great program and plan and focus on that kind of student behavior, and that will be a part of their classroom work.
Yes, Board Member Lewis?
As I sit here and think about this, I am, number one, I'm happy to have heard more than once tonight, the fact that so many of the drivers that have been committed to us over the years and made a difference in the lives of our children day-to-day, will have an opportunity for those that have excellent or decent, or not, I don't like just decent, so, that have good records, will have that. How do we ensure that? I mean, what, how do we ensure that?
How do we ensure that they get retained?
I noticed on one slide, there was, I think there was the word, first consideration, and how do we ensure that happens?
That is STA's role, so, again, Mr. Wilkie could probably give you a better answer, but it's a commitment they made to us, because we told them it was important. We care about who is working for us today, and we want to see continuance of as many of those staff as we can. So as early as next week, STA will be in town to begin meeting with the First Student employees first, before they talk to anyone else about positions with them.
Oh, yes, Board Member Mancer?
I have a question, it's on page, or it's on slide fifty-one, or page fifty-one, and it's back on the safety issues, under the three-year company preventable. Is it that First Student did not, did we not ask to provide, I mean, because I can see that we've got a local rate versus kind of the national?
Right.
And I'm wondering if there's anything about driving within Kansas City that puts us, you know, if you were looking at us against other peer districts, would we, would we have more safety issues and so?
Yeah. It's always more difficult in an urban environment to avoid accidents, and so you do expect to see in cities a higher rate per million miles than you would in our more rural communities, or smaller communities around the country even. From my understanding, and again, I'm not the transportation expert, but I did a lot of reading on this, and to make sure that I understood, we did ask, we were hoping to get what the other vendors provided, and what is your company overall. First Student opted to tell us what's happening right here in Kansas City. We would expect to see over one, you know, maybe in that two to three to four percent in an urban environment. I'm not sure this is an apples-to-apples comparison, because it isn't their preventable accident per million of miles as calculated, but it is what was provided, so it's what we used.
Could you go back to the timeline again with the...
Yes, ma'am.
The December, so...
Oops. There we go.
When it talks about the contract language negotiation, begin with the preferred vendor, is there any services that change when you're negotiating? What, can you tell us just more about what happens?
Sure, absolutely. One of the things that is really important in this kind of process management is we can't afford anyone the opportunity to change what they bid. And so while there is levity inside the Missouri statute that says you can negotiate terms after you've chosen, we don't do that here. What you bid is what you bid. And so what we were talking about on December twenty-first, assuring that we understood fully their bid before we could move forward, and then beginning, we ask each vendor, when they submitted their proposal, to send us a proposed contract. They had copies, when they got their RFP, of our current contracts. They were different. And so we began talking about those different components of our contract and saying, are you huge on this? Because we're really huge on this language. And so, and then it became talk between the lawyers after that about the legal ease of the contract language.
Other questions?
Okay, then I have one last one.
Okay.
When was the MBE Prime Fuel, was that provided in the original contract? Or was that the MBE Prime Fuel?
Yes, let me get to that slide. That was a result of those contract language, because, again, most of our vendors said once we are awarded, the contract will really start looking for our MBWBS, and this was a proposal made during that contract language, because our contract talks about fuel, because we have shared fuel costs. And so that came up when we were having contract conversation.
Do we know what percentage of that contract it would be?
We don't, and I don't have, because we aren't currently buying the fuel, I can't tell you the dollar amount, but we'll be working on that to provide you that information.
Right, any other questions? Okay, it would now be in order to have a motion to accept the Student Transportation of America Incorporated, in the amount of forty-five million dollars, estimated total to not exceed for three fiscal years, beginning twenty-nineteen to twenty-twenty?
No, beginning in twenty-nineteen, twenty.
But beginning in twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty. Thank you, that's why I looked up. Okay, is there a motion?
So...
Second.
Is there any debate on this motion? Board Member Mancer? Okay. Yes, Board Member Oats?
Just a quick comment on the Director of Transportation position. I think I've discussed this with you before, but one thing that's really important to me, especially, we, with the Director of Transportation, is that we're looking at all the modes that people get to school. So, you know, whether it's walking, being able to advocate with sidewalks, with the GO-bonds that are being represented right now, parent pickup, and...
They can't hear you. Can you speak more into the mic thing?
I thought I was, but maybe not.
That's better.
Okay, so, just to recap, just the modes, putting someone in charge of all those modes that students get to school, even with the new partnership with KCATA and the high school students. I think it's going to be very important in the future that we're looking very closely at how we can maximize those different routes that people get to school, and the safe ways to get there, so.
We'll certainly put that in the job description.
Board Member Evans?
I sat here with a heavy heart, because I didn't know what was going to happen to the green jackets in the audience.
The most important people in the room?
I'm hoping that STA will give more than full satisfaction to these people, because they have served us well, and to just take on maybe one or two, that would be a deal-breaker for me.
Absolutely, we agree with you.
So I'm hoping that the gentleman is hearing what I'm saying. I want as many of those people hired as possible. Thank you.
Absolutely. And what we will promise you is we'll bring you a report of the number of employees who were offered a position to move over. We can't assure they'll all accept, but we'll let you know who was offered and what percentage that was.
I too do, like, contracts, when you're changing vendors, they have the first right of refusal for the employees, so that they're not impacted by job loss, so I appreciate that we have that in this contract. All right, the motion is for, on Student America, I'm sorry, Student Transportation of America Incorporated, in the amount of forty-five million dollars, the estimated total not to exceed for three fiscal years, beginning twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty school year. This will be a roll, roll call vote. We've already done that. Those in favor will respond yes, those opposed will respond no. The secretary will call the roll.
Ms. Mancer?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Hartsfeld?
No.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes. There is a majority of the whole board in favor of the contract with Student Transportation Services, and the proposal is approved. We'll now take a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent items E-1 through E-32.
This will be, this will be a roll call vote. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Mancer?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Hartsfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, there is a majority in favor, and the consent items are approved. This brings us to the conclusion of our agenda this evening. There is no objection, the meeting is adjourned.